Good afternoon and welcome to Newport Beach. We're going to start the study session for March 10th, 2020. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
All right, moving to current business, clarification of items on the consent calendar. Mr. Hurdman?
I have none.
Ms. Dixon?
Yes, I have.
Yes, sorry.
Yes, you do. You can come back to you. May I speak? In regard to Agenda Item 4, the resolution reestablishing the ad hoc committee on short-term lodging, I just wanted to reiterate that I think it's very important that the committee consider all of the public comments that were made in regards to the proposed ordinance and that the committee come back to the council with a well-reasoned proposal. And as everyone knows, public comments that we heard during our consideration of the proposed short-term lodging ordinance reveal that a lot of people are being seriously impacted by short-term rentals. And if the council moves forward with reestablishing the committee, it will be my goal to come back to the council with a well-thought-out recommendation as expeditiously as possible and hopefully during the month of April, so just a month delay.
Okay. That's okay, I'll come. Yep, Mr. Hurdman.
Okay, thank you. So before we vote on Agenda Item Number 4, the resolution reestablishing the ad hoc committee for short-term rentals, lodging, I want to let everyone know that I have closed out my short-term lodging permit. I closed the permit not because of a conflict of interest, but because I believe that the issue related to short-term lodging, the issues related to short-term lodging are so important, I don't want there to be even a hint that I am making my decision for some type of personal benefit.
Okay, understood, thank you. Mr. Muldoon?
None.
Ms. Brenner?
Yes, on the same topic, after reviewing all comments and concerns, I feel that treating the non-coastal zones differently than the coastal zone by banning STLs outside of the coastal zone is probably not the way to continue. I think we should amend the resolution to provide that the committee will not consider a proposal which would impose additional regulations on the non-coastal zone that are different than the coastal zone.
Okay, so you'll have an opportunity to make that motion. Okay, all right, Mr. Duffield. Okay, Mr. Avery?
Yes, regarding Item 4, I had a short-term lodging permit, which I no longer have, so for reasons that I'm selling the property and it's, I won't own it after two weeks from today. Thank you.
All right, thank you, and I have none. So we'll move on to Item SS2, which is the recognition of Jim DeGrato and the many volunteers of the Corona Del Mar Chamber of Commerce. If you wouldn't mind coming up, Mr. DeGrato, what we'll do is we'll have Ms. Brenner read the proclamation, so you can stand right there in front of the mic. And once she does that, you'll have an opportunity to speak and then we'll have some fun with pictures. So, all right, we'll go over to Ms. Brenner.
Okay, I just wanted to say before I start this that one of the reasons that I nominated Jim was as a representative of all the many hundreds, maybe thousands of volunteers who through the years have served the Corona Del Mar Chamber of Commerce. And I especially want to put in a plug for the people who get out and put up the flags on our holidays up and down the highway, and they are always in need of more volunteers. So any scouting groups that would like to do that, or parents that would like to get their kids involved in some sort of public service, that's a great way to do it. And so, the proclamation reads, whereas the Corona Del Mar Chamber of Commerce was formed in 1957 as a strategic business and community resource organization and has worked diligently to promote and support local businesses within the CDM Business District and to create community spirit and improve the well-being of both CDM residents and businesses alike, and whereas Jim DeGrado has served this organization for more than 20 years in every volunteer role, including Chairman of the Board of Directors, Chairman of the 39th Annual Corona Del Mar Scenic 5K, Chairman of the CDM Highway of Flags Committee, and logistics volunteer for the 42nd Annual Corona Del Mar Christmas Walk, and whereas Jim DeGrado has led countless meetings, has answered numerous 3:00 AM duty calls for annual event logistics, created and maintained a team spirit with hundreds of volunteers for many years, served as a patriotic citizen organizing the vast display of American flags up and down East Coast Highway in the CDM Business District, served as a loyal and dedicated confidant of the chamber's executive team, and has always been willing to lend a hand, no matter how big or small. And whereas, in addition to his work with the CDM Chamber, Jim has led the emergency services team at the now Hoag Classic Golf Tournament for the past 12 years and has provided our community with team spirit after retiring as fire captain of the LA Fire Department for more than 35 years. And whereas Jim's volunteerism goes far beyond those items mentioned here, including support for many other community organizations, he serves as a representative of the hundreds of volunteers who have served the Corona Del Mar Chamber for over 63 years. Now, therefore...
I, Will O'Neill, Mayor of the City of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, do hereby recognize Jim DeGrado for his many years of service to the citizens and community of Newport Beach, Corona Del Mar. Congratulations. Thank you. So the mic is yours.
Well, simply want to say I just thank you, everybody, for, this was a great surprise, and I appreciate everything that Joy has done for the city, and I just love Corona Del Mar and happy to do everything that she said that I do. Thank you very much.
Absolutely, so we'll meet right over near the flags.
Let me take one more, one, two, three. And then...
All right. Go ahead, I have the flash. All right, I'll get this one, I'll get this one too. All right. All right. So we're gonna move on to Item Number 3, the capital improvement program, early look. Mr. Webb?
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. I think before we start, we're gonna do recusals first.
Sounds good. We'll go down the line, given how many projects this is covering. Mr. Hurdman, this is the time to announce any recusals on the CIP discussions.
One having to, as far as myself, one having to do with the Babo Island drainage and pump stations, have to recuse myself from that.
All right, thank you. Ms. Dixon?
Do I have, is there Lido water thing? No? No?
If I could interrupt too, I did clarify, this year's slurr program is on the Peninsula in West Newport, so you'll have a recusal on that if we talk about it.
All right. Mr. Muldoon?
Thank you, I have a recusal on the fire station. The replacement includes a design component that involves, I believe wireless, so I have a conflict to the business interests as I do for the rest of these. The Babo Island CDM micro-transit feasibility study, yes. The Babo Island CDM micro-transit feasibility study, the traffic signal rehabilitation program that includes three locations, Jamburi University, University of La Vida, and Newport Center Drive, Civic Center Drive, Grant Howell Park Rehabilitation, and Underground Utility Assessment District. All of these locations involve a wireless telecommunication component which conflicts me for business reasons. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Ms. Brenner?
For real property interest, I believe only Grant Howell Park.
Okay. Mr. Duffield?
Thank you. Aaron, I'm sorry, I'm okay, thanks.
Look at you. Mr. Avery.
I don't believe I have any.
All right, I don't have any either. All right, Mr. Webb, go ahead.
Thank you again, Mayor. Dave Webb, your Public Works Director, also with me tonight, Jim O'Leahan, your Deputy Director and City Engineer. Thank you again for taking the time to go through our early look of our 2021 capital improvement program. Just for those at home too, and those watching, wanted to start a little bit about this program. The City Council allocates funds towards the capital improvement program. We have some basic guidelines here we use. This budget we're putting together focuses on our resources on maintaining and replacing the existing infrastructure in the city and keeping it in good shape. This program is also looking to include $5 million in general fund this year, as we'd have done in years past, towards infrastructure maintenance and repair. Additionally, we're looking to put in about a little more than $2.3 million in additional neighborhood enhancement funding directed towards streets, drainage, traffic, and landscape enhancements. And also, we're continuing our investment in Newport Harbor Parks, replacement of buildings, et cetera. One other thing, as you wonder how we select our projects, we pick our projects through a variety means. The first one, we have a series of master plans, I've listed several here. Those generate a series of projects that come out every year. We also get projects identified and requested by the community, council members, and department staff. We also develop in projects to support the council's goals and objectives, and once in a while, we have projects we need to address federal, state law, and legal actions. So with that, I'm gonna kind of introduce the, this year's plan we're looking at. To start with, the capital improvement plan, as you recall, is kind of a rolling document. It doesn't do it like an operating budget where it closes out every year. We go through the years, and we're gonna be referring to the current capital improvement project, the 1920 Plan, as our base, and we'll be building the 2021 Plan on that. So right now, the current plan we're working under is, the program has $93.2 million, which was adopted into the program for 1920. Our plan, we're looking at 2021, and again, I'll say tentative numbers, we're looking at basically $113.3 million. That plan looks right now about $48.4 million in new funding and about $64.9 million of rebudgets. I'm gonna stop on rebudgets a minute, because this is, we have to cut it off somewhere, so we took our numbers as of the end of February. So we have a lot of rebudgets there, and I listed some large ones there that the council and others might notice. We have some big-dollar items in our plan right now, first one being like the Lido Fire Station, Cameo Shores, Grant Howell Park. All these projects are moving through, and I put some award dates and maybe some significant monument dates next to it, so you can kind of see, we will probably award up to $10 to $15 million before June, which would drop that $64 million, and also, some of these will be awarded right after. So it is a big number, but we have a lot of big projects in the plan, just for those at home thinking there's a lot of rebudgets. I want to also talk a little bit about one of our master plans. This is our facility finance plan, and our finance committee just looked at this in February and made some recommended changes to this. We made some modifications this year. All those red boxes are basically modifications, updates we made on this plan, and the mayor thought it'd be good to share with council on what this plan, the changes are in that. So on the next slide here, I've listed some of the changes we made to the finance plan. In that, we've updated the unit costs based on recent bids, project details that were lacking, we included those. We made a couple of movements. We moved the replacement of the construction of both the Babo Village Fire Station and the Babo Village Library out a little bit, from 2022 to 2025. That was based primarily, we reviewed those buildings, facilities, we think they could go a little longer, we worked with the fire and the library departments to make sure they're okay with that. We'll probably need to do some maintenance, but the buildings can go a little longer and also help our workflow. As you know, we have a lot of buildings in place, we're currently working on the Lido Fire Station right now, we just completed the CDM, so spacing that out a little bit will actually help the workflow. We also moved the replacement of the Santa Barbara Fire Station out from 2025 to 2035, the reason being it used to have a 50-year life in the plan. We've looked at the building, we put a new roof on it lately, we think we can get 60 years out of it, so we pushed that out a little bit. We'll keep monitoring this, and it's a living document, but we think it can last 60 years. We also added a refinement for the Junior Lifeguard Facility into the plan this year. As you recall, you had a study session on this back in April 9th, and the council gave us some direction, basically, right now it stands as a $3.6 million all-in project with some city contributions and a contribution from a private organization for $1.275 million. We'll be looking at that a little later on that one. And then we also added in the proposed lecture hall we've been talking about, we also had a council presentation on that. Right now, we're looking at about an $8 million, or excuse me, an $8 million all-in project, a 50-50 split with the private contribution being about $4 million. There are three projects in the plan that we're, we've kind of identified here that aren't in the plan yet, they, we know they're on the horizon and need some consideration. The first one is the Babo Yacht Basin Complex. I think the mayor's gonna lead some effort to look at that a little later, we identified that as an item in the finance committee. It is an older, a wood frame unit down there consisting of a lot of garages and three apartment buildings. One of the apartment buildings is not rentable right now, we need to kind of take a look at what we need to do, so that'll be pulled aside and probably further studied. We have a pool complex we're talking about right now, both the Parks Beaches and Rec Commission and the Harbor Commission, both have subcommittees looking at this facility, kind of come back to council eventually and give them their recommendations. And also, our Recreation Department would like to do its second synthetic turf down at Royal Park, which is on their master plan list for synthetic turfs. So those are some projects we'll be studying later, they are not currently funded in the plan. With that...
So, Mr. Webb, just for a moment, so I can make sure, I make sure that folks understand that. Could you go back slide, one slide? It's tough to read this on the slide itself, obviously, because it's really small, but in the main portion up there, that's all of the projects in the main portion we are funding, and we're anticipating funding, and that's the purpose of this, is to make sure we're anticipating the funding over a level amount of time.
Yes, that's correct.
Down below is the potential projects. At the finance committee, the recommendation was to move the Babo Yacht Building Complex out from the main portion and down into the potential projects, because the anticipated cost of a full rehab was pretty sizable, so we need to take a look at that and come back to council with some kind of recommendation on that. So we just need to figure out what we're gonna do with that. And the other, and what's important is that potential projects, if there's a project in there, we are not planning on the funding side of it for the budget purposes, so that's why they're down there. And so, what Mr. Webb is saying is that if we were to add any of those projects back into the main section, we need to be setting aside more money, either through developer fees or through general fund. So I just wanted to make sure I had pointed that out. That's why I asked Mr. Webb to include this as part of the presentation to explain what the proposed, or what the recommendations were from the finance committee. All right, go ahead.
Thank you. Last two bullets on that screen also, the other point was that finance checked the current plan, and currently, as we have the plan with these modifications, we don't need to add additional dollars to the plan, it's self-funding. But as the mayor said, if we add more projects, we'll have to look at that, we may have to add some dollars. So, as you know, the early look is, what we're looking at today is funds we want to add to the current new CIP projects and existing projects. So I'm gonna start off by section by section, go through it a little bit, but just to explain for the folks at home, we're gonna talk, for instance, the facility slide here. You'll see some projects on there where we're adding money to existing projects, they're in black. We'll see projects that have green funding, those are new projects we're adding into the plan. And I'll go through those and give a little discussion on each, and then we'll kind of stop at each slide if anybody has any questions. So the first one that we mentioned just recently is the Central Library Lecture Hall, which we just added into the FFP, and we're gonna put into the budget this year. We're adding $7.3 million, we're proposing to put into the CIP for the next year. In that 7.34 million of that is contribution, it's coming from, and the notations on the far right are where the funds are coming from, and they're identified on the bottom. So the FFP and also contribution funds would fund that project. The one below at Cliff Drive Park Clubhouse was originally gonna be some minor work, when we looked at it and looked at it further, we feel that the building needs to be replaced, and that was discussed, it's currently in our budget, we're gonna add money to it to replace it this year for $500,000 will be added out of the FFP. Our facility maintenance master plan, as you recall, this is major capital improvements like for buildings, for instance, air conditioning replacements, re-carpeting, painting, re-roofing. So we're putting another $1.5 million into that plan, this is, again, general fund funneled through the facility maintenance master plan. And then we've been working on the Lido Fire Station, which we think will start breaking ground probably in November this year, maybe December. So this is the remainder money out of the FFP added to it. We currently are budget, we have 9.1 million in the budget to bring it back to what we think it's gonna cost, this will bring it up to 9.5 million. And then the Junior Guards Building, as I mentioned with the FFP, we're gonna be adding that into the budget this year. The 3 million roughly in there also includes the 1.275 contribution. And I'll note, there's two asterisks on this lecture hall and the Junior Guards Building, if you recalled at the, just a recent council meeting, the council set up council ad hoc committees for both those, I believe, Mayor O'Neill and Mayor Protam Avery are on the lecture hall, and Mayor O'Neill and council member Dixon are on the lifeguard building. They'll be looking at that, because there are some changes by the funding partners who want to make some modifications, and we're looking to put MOUs in place on those buildings. Any questions on these? Moving on to streets and drainage. Our first project here is a very large project, we're looking at putting $2.1 million of new money in the CIP. This is alley reconstructions, and a lot of it has to do with recent waterline projects and also a lot of our underground assessment district projects. So you note the funding on here, it says general fund, water fund, we also have sewer fund and contributions, which is the assessment district money. There's not a lot of general fund money in here, about $400,000, most of it is the other funds that'll be paying for the replacement of alleys that have been chopped up, basically, and need to be repaired due to underground utility work. The next project on here, Babo Boulevard Median Project, this is a long, the last project of a long series that started replacing all the medians on Babo Boulevard. This ran from basically Coast Highway all the way down to 12th Street, which is done. This project would take it from 12th Street down to Melinda, which would complete it. Currently, the project's in the budget, it's under design right now, this adds the funding for it to do construction of the project. There's two funding sources here, Babo Village Parking Fund, and also, we need some neighborhood enhancement money for a total of $1.8 million for the project. Next project on here, Benita Canyon, some pavement project, we're looking at putting all the, we're doing the construction part of it, so we're gonna add $2.5 million roughly. This is SB1 money and gas tax money we'll be adding into the current project to construct this next year. Cameo Highlands, you recall several years ago, we did Cameo Shores, we completely rebuilt all the streets in that community, we need to do that in Cameo Highlands. This is currently the remainder of the money out of the gas tax, we'll be adding $183,000 to the current money, which will bring it up to $2.8 million, which then Jim's crews will be able to complete the construction. A new project this year, city bridge maintenance, we don't do this too often, but we have quite a lot of bridges in town the city needs to maintain, and we get our Caltrans state reviews of those bridges every two years, and we've identified some areas where we have some sprawling, some undercutting of foundations and things, so we're gonna, we're looking to package a small gas tax project together, $800,000 to address those items with all the bridges. And then, the next project on here, the Collins Island Bridge Replacement, this would start the design, this is our next bridge on the list to be replaced, it's one of our older bridges, it serves eight homes on Collins Island, so we thought we'd put in $150,000 to start the design effort on that bridge. Any questions on these? Okay. More street projects, the concrete replacement program, we do this annually, this usually goes in front of the slurr program, but it'll take care of some neighborhood concrete, again, that, this year, this one, partly on the Peninsula, West Newport, but it also is a citywide concrete that we take care of some of our issues. That's a general fund we use, and that's $700,000 for that. East Coast Highway Pavement, this is a portion, East Coast Highway relinquished many years ago, and it's now up for pavement, we need to pave, basically repave the street from MacArthur all the way up to Newport Coast Drive, so that's why it's a very expensive project, $4.1 million, mainly gas tax measure M, and we have the remainder, what we call the PCH relinquishment, Caltrans gave us $3.5 million when we took the road, so we're gonna spend the rest of it, that what's remains, it's about a million dollars, I think, on this, on this project here to bring that highway up to snuff. Also, Jamburi Road is coming up, just like we did MacArthur, we're looking to start the design for repaving Jamburi Road, this goes from Coast Highway to Ford, and we're gonna be looking to use neighborhood enhancement money on that. And again, some of this, again, I noticed, general fund and neighborhood enhancement, we've used up all our typical street money, gas tax, measure M, SB1, and some of these other big projects. So to keep the highways up, we're dipping into some of the other non-traditional funds like neighborhood enhancement. Below that is a landscape enhancement program, we don't have a lot of money here, we're putting, we're hoping to put $300,000 in to bring up the total to $631,000. This is used for various pots of landscaping around here, we're working on a median rebuild on Lido Island, there's some other areas that approached us that need new landscaping, city landscaping and the irrigation systems that need to be refreshed, this program would take care of some of those areas. Newport Boulevard Landscape Rehabilitation, this is a project that we added in last year, needs a little more money as we got into it, so we're looking to put in $250,000 in neighborhood enhancement, bringing the total of $750,000. And then Ocean Boulevard Concrete Pavement, this is, this is a project we started many years ago, and we've been trying to finish. Last year, we put it on hold, and we took $500,000 out of this program and put it over in West Newport to do some street enhancements up towards Placentia. So we're looking to put $500,000 back in this program, and hopefully we'll complete the concrete pavement reconstruction from Goldenrod, I believe, down to Carnation.
All right, so, two quick things, neighborhood enhancement fund, that's the, that's part of our surplus that we take half of and put in, okay. Then Ocean Boulevard, so this is one, when I was looking at the slide, I was trying to understand, because I do recall this being, I remember thinking this was pretty expensive the last time we were talking about it, last year, but I didn't recall the $500,000 being transferred from one, from over into West Newport, so could you explain that just a little bit more, because I was trying to remember what, what that was?
Yeah, last year when we went through the budget, we had some of the community members want to put some more money into the West Newport specific plan, and there's some enhancements up there. So one of, and actually, to council member Brenner's suggestion, she said, why don't we take out of this fund, we took a half million dollars and put it over there, and that's currently in the current budget and being worked on right now. Jim's working on design and hopefully deliver that this year. What we wanted to do is put the money back in, so this project could be completed. There is some complexities this project, there is a coastal action out there on one of the homes on Fernleaf that is talking about an out, or an overlook in that area, we thought we might be able to work it in here, there's some landscape enhancements, haven't worked out all the details yet, but the streets ready to be replaced, and that's the bulk of this project.
So it's not that the design or the materials or whatnot has gone up by a half million dollars, it's just that that's what it costs, we just transferred out, and you're asking to fully fund it this go around?
That's to make it whole.
Okay. All right. Ms. Dixon?
Thank you, Mayor. Speaking about last year, just reminded me, it's actually Mr. Avery's district, but the landscaping, streetscape that was proposed initially by Tony Petros, and then it's kind of gotten forgotten about, are we putting that back into any capital budget?
I believe you're referring to the Avon-San Ana Street area, and it's currently in the budget, and it'll go continuing, we're not taking it out, so we're not adding any money to it, that's why it doesn't show up on here.
I thought it was up in the industrial area.
That's the one I just referred to, the half million dollars that the mayor was talking to. There's another project up there that we worked with some folks in West Newport to do some landscape enhancement.
Yes.
We're looking at Placentia Avenue.
You're right, okay.
To put medians in.
That's where it is, okay.
But that's still in the budget too, and going forward.
Good, okay, thanks.
So finishing up our streets, pavement management plan update, every two years, we have to kind of resurvey our streets, see how the paving conditions are, and then upgrade our management plan. $42,000 in general fund for that. The slurr program is continuing this year, this year again, it's in Babo Peninsula area in West Newport, this is our asphalt streets, neighborhood streets that we coat every seven years, $1.1 million in general fund there. And then we have some minor street repairs we do every year, in this case, we're asking for a little bit more, $700,000. We have spots around the city we have to address, and there's another kind of a major one, about $400,000 of this is gonna go towards Mission Bay Drive, which is up in the Spyglass area, they're having some street failures due to drainage and other problems up there, so this would take care of that problem. And then lastly, Vio Lido Nord and Sioux Pavement Rehab, we're looking to do the design next year, $150,000 from general fund. This year is in the current program, we'll build the water mains on both the Sioux in the south, and then, it's had so much construction on those streets, I think it's ready for repavement, so once we get the water lines in, we'll design it, we will show the pavement money in the following year. And I'm just gonna make a note on that, we are gonna change the format this year when you see the final plan, we're gonna move to a pure five-year budget, we've been working with the city manager's office. As you recall, several years ago, we gave you what we call the early look, we kind of show you the five-year plans, but we've worked with Grace's office, and we're gonna go to, you'll see the one-year 2021 plan and a five-year projection in the actual CIP. So what you'll have is more documents in this, and you'll see projects in there on the years out, we're not showing them here, but they'll start showing up, drawing them from the master plan, drawing them from council and the community. So folks that, for instance, there are some folks who want some more work done in West Newport. I don't think we can put it in this year, but I think we're looking to put it in the following year, because we'll have maybe the available revenue and the staff availability to do it. You'll start seeing those in the five-year plan. Any questions? Any questions on this slide? All right. So lastly, some drainage projects here. Our biggest drainage project, we've been working a lot on Balboa Island. We've been talking to the community, had several community meetings. As you know, we've been working with the tide valves, and Mark's utilities groups have been out there doing a lot of pumping. We've had some flooding issues. So we're working on a master plan of drainage on the island to put in a drainage system and a pump system. $2 million in general fund and tidelands money in that project. And this is probably just the start. What we owe you, and I'm working with Jim and his staff, is to come up and develop the master plan and bring it back to council for your review and how this all fits together. So this would be to design and maybe build the first pump station, most likely down at the west end of the island. There may be one or two more pump stations and some additional underground storm drain conduits we have to put in. And then lastly, storm drain rehab. This is, we have some small money that, here, $200,000 in general fund to do some patching and correction in some of our concrete pipes. Any questions here? All right. I'm going to move over to transportation real quick. First project here, we talked a little bit a while back with council. This is the Balboa Island-Crona del Mar micro transit feasibility study. This was an OCTA grant that we were awarded. The $65,000 we're looking here is all contributions between the grant and the folks on the island that'll be paying for that, to look if circulators make sense connecting either Crona del Mar or maybe the Newport Center and Balboa Island. The next project there is our seven-year program, our trolley that we're running right now from an OCTA grant, actually two grants. We're adding just a little bit more money in there to make it whole. This is year four of seven, and this is parking money that we have been using to fund the trolley out of Balboa Village Parking Fund.
If this is, if this is year four of seven, why are we rebudgeting $606,000? Shouldn't it be 400?
Because all the, all the money's in there for all seven years. So we've taken it out of the various, there's some parking money and other grant money. It's all programmed in there, and it'll just keep going through the years instead of reprogramming every year. That was a decision that was made a few years ago.
So, okay. All right.
Again, most of it's grant money. There's some parking money in there. This next project is something that came out of our last talks about Newport Heights. We're calling it the Cliff Drive Mobility and Traffic Commie. We're looking to use some neighborhood enhancement, $250,000 to start looking at maybe Cliff Drive and some other areas in there to maybe on some improvements we can do. A lot of discussion here. We haven't completely figured this out. As you know, there's been a lot of discussion going on with Enson right now, and they're changing the configuration on how the children and the kids will be going into the school, making it more geared towards the intersection of Cliff and Irvine. So we think Cliff is going to be more of a travel route, and obviously the traffic patterns will change a little. So we put some money in to start addressing that once we see what's going on there. And then the MacArthur Boulevard RTSP, this is Regional Transportation Signal Synchronization Program. This is OCTA money with the city of Irvine doing signal coordination. We have several signals. We partner with them, and this is the city share of their grant to coordinate those signals. Lastly, we have our ongoing traffic signal rehabilitation program. We're looking to do three more signals this year, about $930,000, and we're taking that out of gas tax. Any thoughts on these?
Mayor, back on that, the trolley program. So I think there's more that's spent per year, so we'll, we'll get a little more information of what the annual spend is. So it's, it's not $100,000 a year, which is what it, kind of looking at that, looks like it's laid out to be, so we can get a little more.
Oh, I didn't, yeah, no, I understood that because it probably should show BVP/CF, right? Because the vast majority of this project is paid for by OCTA funding, so.
That's true, too.
Yeah. So that's probably, that'd probably be helpful to show. And then, and then, yeah, I, I understand that, I just, it just looks funny to rebudget toward something that's, you know, two of the, yeah, it just carries over. So three, I mean, three-sevenths of this has been spent, so it just looks weird to rebudget for something we've already spent three-sevenths of it on. But like I said, I understand. I think it'd probably be, it would be a little clearer if it was BVP/CF, but that's, that's neither here nor there.
We can get you more detail. It is a little.
I don't need more detail on it.
Okay.
I'm just suggesting.
It's a complex project.
No, no, Mr. Webb, but I'm suggesting, but I am suggesting, yeah, for, for future clarity, I think that would be helpful.
Thank you. All right. We're going to move into water quality then and some environmental programs. Our first one here, total maximum daily loads. As you know, the city has several of these imposed upon us by the Regional Water Quality Control Board, and we have to do work towards this every year. So typically, we put about $200,000 in tidelands money to address those requirements. The next project, Big Canyon Nature Park. As you recall, we're working with the Conservancy on this. They got a large grant, $1.688 million there. We're going to add a little money to that for some matches and other things, some miscellaneous. This is going to come out of a fund you may not be aware of. It's called the Upper Newport Bay Fund, and this is basically tidelands money. When the Beacon Bay bill went through, there was an earmark that so much money had to go towards the Upper Newport Bay ecological areas, and it fits this, so we're going to take that fund and use it towards our match on, on this project. And then Newport Dunes Diversion Replacement. We need to do some work there. We have some tidelands money to address some of the replacement needs, to address another TMDL or fecal chloroform, TMDL. Any questions on? Okay. Parks, Harbors, and Beaches. Grant and Hall, as you know, we've been working away on. This brings $1.7 million more FFP money coming in to make the project whole because we're looking to award that project this year and construct it this summer. So a total will be $7.2 million roughly for that. We are doing playground refurbishment programs. We do about $300,000 every year. The business excise tax pays for this, $300,000 towards that. We've been working away at West Newport Glass Replacement. This is along Coast Highway at the far end of the city. This should hopefully get it done. This is $150,000 of BET money again. And then we received another grant this year for the Civic Center pathways, a portion of which we can take care of with this grant money, $215,000 in contributions there. Any questions?
Yep. Ms. Dixon.
Yeah. Dave, didn't last year we talk about, or maybe you do this in the time of the budget, so I maybe stand corrected, but we were, to see what, when a project is a continuing project, it's a carryover, rebudgeting, you call it, if the project, original plan spend typically increases going forward, do we show, where do we show the original estimate? And obviously, inflation, construction cost affected, but I thought we talked about this once, to be able to reference what the original plan cost was.
We do, and actually, because this is just a schematic, when we come to you in May with the budget, we'll have that. And in your budget detail, there's usually, we add to that prior year and all the expenses.
Yes.
There's a line item. You'll see it again in the coming budget of prior year expenses to date and new program money next to it.
Okay. So was prior year always the original project estimate?
It's not always. Most projects are done in a year. Some carry over. That's why I reference some of the bigger ones. When the council said there's an eight million all-in, we try to make sure that it's always out there in front of it. But I don't have something that says the estimate of every project other than what we show in the budget.
Okay. It's just a good frame of reference to see the, how inflation and tight construction market affects our costs.
Good point on that, too, and that's some of the reasons that you see some of it. We're going to bring you a signal award coming next time, and we saw the bids came in high. And part of it has to do that, now that we have SB1 and everybody's jumping on and putting out projects, there's only so many contractors, and we are seeing escalating prices, combined with maybe material delivery problems from China, or now that we only have two signal manufacturers in the United States versus three, we're starting to see some supply chain problems. Parks, Harbors, and Beaches, some more here. We have the American Legion Bulkhead we're working on. That's going through coastal approvals now, or working with the Legion on this to reconstruct. Remember, the Legion sits on city property, and the bulkhead, there is a city responsibility, so we're going to put a new cap on that. This project will probably start after summer. We're going to wait to get through the boating season and start working on that. Eelgrass Survey, as part of our RGP 54, every five years, we have to resurvey the harbor. So this will be the eelgrass survey portion, tidelands money, $135,000. And then additional, we have harbor bulkheads and seawalls and structures. We do a lot of work around the harbor. We're going to add another $200,000 to this program, and that'll bring it up to about $607,000 for additional wallwork. This is not necessarily Balboa Island. This is other walls we own around the harbor. And then Harbor Pier Rehabilitation. Under the Harbor Capital Master Plan, there are several public docks and piers in there that are coming up for reconstruction. So we have currently $500,000 in there with a couple docks. We're adding the next year projects in there and hopefully deliver that package. So we'll be putting $150,000 of tideland in there. Ocean Piers and inspections and maintenance. We do this every two years on our piers. We have the Two Big Ocean Piers, so we're putting $450,000 to do the inspections and the maintenance on those piers. And then West Newport Bathimetery Study. This is new. West Newport is Newport Island, and we've been getting requests for years to dredge that back there. We're not really sure what we need to do, so we're going to go ahead and do a bathimetery study. It's underwater survey, what the depths are in that area, so we can start thinking about how we can maybe dredge that area out. Any questions? All right. Moving on to water. Water, our first project here is our 16th Street Pump Station and Generator. This pump station is actually at the Utilities Yard on the far side of town. We have electrical work, motor work, and we're also adding a backup generator for supply reliability over there, $1.9 million of water fund. The second part of the advanced metering infrastructure project will be put in the budget this year. As you know, we did the pilot program under Mark's group in Utilities. This is adding $3.2 million of water fund to start the next one, and there'll be one more phase after this, which should show up in that five-year budget you'll see come May. Actually, I'm sorry, that budget, we'll get the draft out. You'll probably see that at the end of this month, and you can start to see that, and we'll talk again about it in May. And then we have annually, we have money in there for adjusting water valves, $50,000. We also have a lot of water transmission main work we're doing. We're doing a large valve replacements, our big mains that run down Jamboree, MacArthur, Coast Highway, we're replacing those valves, $1.5 million in waterfront there. Hillsborough Pump Station is a sewer pump station that we'll be working on, I'm sorry, water pump station on that. We also, I mentioned earlier, this is the construction money for Lido, Sud, and Nord water main replacement that we'll be doing this coming year to put those new water mains in. And then just a little money on water main pipelines around town, $100,000. We've got enough above it to keep us busy, I believe. Any questions on water?
Yep. Ms. Dixon.
Quick question. Is the advanced metering, is, is that the automatic valve replacement that we've been talking about?
That's actually where we're reading our meters by radio waves.
All right. Then what about the advanced valve replacement? Where is that?
There is a transmission valve replacement going around right now. That's maybe what you're, I don't.
Oh, so it's premature to ask? Because I thought, didn't you recently say somewhere that, you know, it's just now we're in a high tide period, and our staff goes out and gets out and opens up the valves, and we were going to do some automation of that?
Yeah. Maybe I'm confusing. I'm sorry. Those are tide valves.
Yes.
That's in our drainage system.
Okay.
So the drainage system has tide valves at the end of the drain pipes. This, this water valve is a different.
It's different.
Is a pressurized system.
But we are doing the tide valves.
Yes, we are.
Yep.
In fact, you are going to award a project at your next meeting.
Oh, good. All right.
Next, tonight, actually.
Thanks.
Mr. Duffield.
Thank you. So I see backup generator. Is that a, a new one?
That's a brand-new backup generator.
So that's great. From what I understand, so we all know, we didn't have a backup generator.
That's correct. This is our main pumping station that comes, our wells pump to this reservoir, this reservoir, this station pumps all the way up to our main reservoir in.
Right.
Corona del Mar. So this will provide reliability on the generation side.
Very cool. Yeah. So imagine if one of these big buildings had a problem, and our pump quit working, and it was on fire. Now we have a backup. That's very good. Thank you.
I want to ask about the, the water main replacement on Lido. Does that, yeah, sorry, Diana, I apologize. I want to ask about the water main replacement.
I believe, I believe that's just replacing like-for-like, though, so I don't believe you have a comp.
That is like-for-like.
It's just like-for-like, cast iron mains.
Oh, good. Okay. All right. I'm, I'm curious about the, the timing and sequencing of that, that project, because that'll be pretty, just like when we were replacing on Balboa Island, it's going to be pretty disruptive. So I'm kind of curious how we, how we're going to be looking at sequencing and what the timing's going to look like on that one.
It's always a challenge when we're working in some of the islands or any street, actually. Jim's trying to look up the schedule on that. We would typically probably do that in the winter, I'm guessing, Jim, because we wouldn't want to interrupt the summer flows. And we've usually tried to, on the islands, particularly Balboa and Lido, miss the holidays. So sometimes we'll come in and do work, let's say from September to November, stop, come back and finish it right after, and start January to March. It is disruptive. We will be going down the middle of the street. We will be highlining, they call it, where we have to take a main out, we have to plug everybody in on a temporary main in the gutter, and then unplug them. But we've done a lot of these. We just finished one on the peninsula down, I'm going to say in 32nd Street area. So.
If I recall correctly, I mean, the main on this is 80 years old, isn't it? I mean, so this is like a once in, once every 70, 80-year kind of project, but it is, it is enormous, so.
This is an older, it's a cast iron main, and our concerns is with cast iron. As you know, we've saw the ones up in LA that were popping and having flooding problems. So we have been trying to replace some of our cast iron mains. This is probably the original main on the island, and I can't remember when the island was put together, 1930, 40. So it's.
All right. So Jim, what's, what's the sequencing looking like?
So what we're looking at for construction is this September through May.
Okay.
That's the duration.
And do we, can, can we, can we try to avoid the Thanksgiving, Christmas time areas?
Yeah, we could, we can schedule it so that they pull out or, you know, not be active during those times, during the holidays.
Okay. Yeah, I'm guessing you're going to have a couple of questions. Ms. Dixon.
Well, we've talked a lot about it. I was just going to remind you of something you already know. When we were doing the other side, was it AT&amp;T that, or somebody snipped the AT&amp;T cables? That was a problem that had ramifications for a long time, so... And I've curiously been reading some updates, I think it's from Mark, that private contractors are cutting in lines and doing, we've got to make sure our contractors are beginning, reading the maps of where all the infrastructure is and understanding where all these lines are, because it causes a lot of problems that you already know. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on this one? All right, next.
Okay, we'll move on to our wastewater. And again, one of our projects, adjusting manhouse grade. This is typically when we do an overlay project, we have to go out and readjust the manhole covers, so we have 150,000 of sewer funds there. We have a sewer lift station improvement project in there for $1 million. This would be a pretty big effort. It's not a new station, it's replacing a station. I believe this is Ford Road. And then sewer line lining and repairs, we always are keeping up with our sewer lines and keeping age. We put split lines in and repaired low spots and sags. Any questions on sanitation? Lastly, our miscellaneous column. Not a lot this year. We have a lot still working through, but we're going to add some money to our oil rehabilitation. We have 15 wells, as you know, and Utilities request to add a little more money so they can do a little more well-work. And then underground assessment districts. We did approve 113, which had a city portion of it. This is the money that the city would pay as our portion of the district, adding it into our budget to pay that bill. Any questions there? So, with that, this is the total summary we went through, just tentatively of what we're looking forward to. And these numbers will change as we move through the year and get towards the final budget in May, but we're here to take any questions you have on this or thoughts. All right, Ms. Dixon.
I have a lot of questions. $118,000, I don't remember being that high before. Usually it's in the 60,000 or 70,000. Maybe things are just getting more expensive?
Two things. It's not so much more expensive. We are getting more work, and there's, we're pushing a little more money through the system, but we're also, recall that first slide I showed, there's a lot of rebudgets in here, 64 million.
Right.
And a lot of it has to do with that, that 113, if you take away that, you're probably in the 60, 70 range. We've been at that range for several years.
Right.
When I started, we were down to 20 million, but it grew. And we also have years that spike, because council sometimes will add money mid-year to it, like a building, we built this, it wasn't in there, we added to it, so... It is a big workload. We are challenged to deliver, and I think we're delivering a lot. But again, some of those are going to break if we get someone's like the fire station, nine-something million, that'll just take a big chunk. Grand House, 7 million, that'll take a big chunk, and those are coming soon.
So, that leads to my next question. I know you have Jim, and so you've, you added a lot of good strength to your department. You've got a lot of projects here, so you obviously are going to manage that well.
We're sure going to try. And if I could just take a note on that, not only did we add Jim, Angela Kreske's in the audience, she's our new finance and inventory manager, and Raymond Reyes, they're behind-the-scenes working a lot on this budget. This is a new challenge for us. We have new staff, we're all learning. We are taking on the five-year budget. I think it's going to be great, but we're trying to work through those sheets, too, so... But we're up to the challenge.
And then one final comment. I say this every year, because it's kudos to our staff, that, as you mentioned earlier in the first part, it's 5 million is what's budgeted from the general fund, operating budget, into capital. And all these little footnotes at the bottom show where our staff is very aggressive of going after external funds, SB1 funds, Measure M funds, other grants, other federal grants. And so, 100 of the new spending, well, I guess it's just five, or in these two years of budgets, one carryover and one current year, it's $10 million of general fund. Everything else is coming from an external source. Is that correct?
Mostly. You also have neighborhood enhancement you put in, which is general fund for your policies.
Right, surplus.
So, there's that money.
Which is about $4 million.
There's a little of the general fund here and there. The city puts substantial money into its infrastructure. We're really thankful for that, and that's, I think...
We are very fortunate that we, as a city, can afford to do that. We have good staff, sharp staff, that goes after external funds and manages all this very well, so we continue the public investment into our community, and that is very important for property values. So, thank you. And safety, and a safe city, so thank you.
Mr. Avery.
Yeah, I concur. I just think our planning, public works, just do an incredible job, and obviously, a lot of this stuff is taken for granted. We can't help it, because a lot of it, we don't see, and it, but it just keeps rolling, and it's extraordinary in its totality of what gets, what gets done and the advanced planning. I would like to advocate just a bit for my Newport Shores residents, and I know your staff, and Dave, you in particular, are well aware of the situation, particularly along PCH, leaving town before you get to the bridge going over into Huntington Beach. Out of all the entrances to Newport Beach, this one's the roughest. And the residents are looking for some, you know, and good on them for wanting to beautify the stretch from the Peninsula Bridge all the way up to the bridge going over into Huntington Beach, and it's looking great. I know we've taken it tranches at a time. There's still some more to go. So, Dave, I was just wondering if you could just give a brief overview, looking ahead the next couple of years, not locking you in to think anything, but just, I know there's a plan, and I know that, you know, it's really tough with the funds available.
So, my, my thought when I talked to staff this year on that, I mentioned, when you see your five-year document that we'll put out the drafts, and you'll see that in there, we suggest putting that next project in, not the next fiscal year, the year after.
Right.
And I do that for two things. We have quite a lot of workload, and there's no sense promising something I really can't deliver for you. I mean, we could, I could beat Jim some more, and he could froth at the mouth, but I don't think it's going to work. So, I know it, we've put a lot of money and effort over there, and I understand there's some folks over there would like to see what they would call Phase Four, the last piece right next to the trailer park there. If council so chooses, we could add that, and we could do our best. We can always, if we can find some time appropriate, into the budget, but being cautious, too, of putting too much money and holding in the budget, and when you might have other needs. I don't want to just put money, because truthfully, that would be neighborhood enhancement money you'd probably use for that, which is your general fund. And, and I'd rather leave it on the table for council to direct us and not lock it in something that I probably can't deliver. There's some big projects, as you know. We have Newport Boulevard, there's a half million, three-quarter million in there that we need to get done. We need to get the one for the folks up in West Newport on Placentia done. We added a lot of projects the community wanted, which was kind of piled on top, so we're really working hard to get those out, if that, if that makes sense. But it's council's discretion, you'd like to put in there. That's my plan, anyway, going forward, if you want to fund that. And I don't know the scope of that project, the original CAD, I'm sorry, Citizen Advisory Board had a very elaborate entryway with decorative art, which we didn't think Caltrans would approve, and I'm not sure the council ever wants to revisit that, but maybe there's some level of project there. Surely screening the mobile home park is what they'd really like, I understand.
Right, some mitigation in that direction would be not only beneficial for that neighborhood, obviously, but for all the residents and sort of our whole, the whole look of coming into town from that direction.
And I know the other important for your district is San Ana and Avon, which has been going on for years, going back to Mr. Rosansky, actually, and we're trying to get that done, but there's an underground district now involved there, and, but we, that's a complex one. And one of the things I was going to say, a lot of our projects, the simple ones we get through real easy, if we're just repaving a street, but the more and more our CIP is becoming very complex projects, building projects, coastal-driven, environmental projects, and they really grind things down, you know, traffic projects that get staff really tied around the axle, and that slows the production down. So, we have a lot of those in our program right now.
No, I understand. Thank you for kind of running that out. I think it's important for people to understand that, and I basically, I'd like to keep, obviously, keep the dream alive for not only Newport Shores folks, but the folks in West Newport for the same reasons, just that beautification and benefiting the entire city, of course, because we all travel that road and all the visitors to town travel, and I know you know that, and I know, I know you've always got it, you know, in mind, and I appreciate all the work that's been done in the last couple of years, that's for sure.
We're very thankful for your support, and I'd leave it that if council chooses that's a priority, we're happy to jump on that one. You know, there's always a list of priorities, and we could move something, if that's very important to council, we could move that up, and we'll find something else to come back.
And I'd also like to, once again, thank Ms. Brenner for a little help from her side on our last go-around. Thank you.
Mr. Hurdman.
I just want to state that I would certainly support that, Brad. That would be a priority of mine as well, that screen talking about there.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions up at the dais, comments? All right, seeing none, we'll go out to public comment on this item. Do we have any public comment on this item?
Mayor O'Neill, members of the council. My name is Jim Mosher. For 60 years, from 1953 to 2013, the city charter attempted to add an extra layer of review to presentations like this one by requiring the Planning Commission to make recommendations to you about master plans and public works. A former city council, former city manager found that extra review cumbersome and managed to get voters to remove that provision from the city charter. However, it's still in our general plan, and I would like to read to you the very first implementation program in our 2006 general plan, which says, "When the city or any external agency," and it's interesting, it says, "external agency responsible for planning or implementing public works within the city prepares its annual list of proposed public works and its five-year CIP. These must be submitted to the Planning Commission for review for conformity with the adopted general plan." And it actually cites a government code section that purportedly requires cities to do that. At your next council meeting, you're going to be reviewing the annual report that the city prepares to the state about the status of our general plan, and that report will acknowledge that our Planning Commission no longer does this, despite the general plan's still saying this, but curiously to me, it says that you do this. And the report you'll see at your next meeting says, as of last year, for the similar process, it says, "In June of 2019, the city council confirmed that the fiscal year 2019 through '20 CIP was consistent with the general plan when it approved the CIP with the adoption of the budget." I looked at the budget resolution, I looked at the budget meeting, I could not see that review of consistency of our plan or our five-year plan with our general plan, and I'm really curious where that has happened. And I'm also curious, because I've never seen the Planning Commission or anybody else review the plan or a five-year plan from any external agency that does public works in our city, yet that is supposed to be happening. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Laura Curran. I live in Coronado del Mar. So, my question is about the library lecture hall project. I have been seeing a lot of documentation, I was reading the minutes for the meetings. A lot of the discussion is about the building plan and what the building might look like, the use of the courtyard, the parking spaces, potential amenities. But my concern is, and this may be a different forum, but that we start to look at the operational plan and the operating cost, because there is a connection between the way the building is constructed and what it costs to operate. And you're going to make trade-offs based on that as well. So, as we go forward and talking about the library lecture hall, we should be looking at what the revenue projections are, how many additional staff are going to be needed to operate it. If you are not able to staff it with the people, or the projects, or the participation that you think you are from different speakers, et cetera, so what's a break-even point? And how does that relate to the size of the building that you're building? So, something to think about as we start to move forward, and this becomes more real. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other speakers on this item? It will be, I'll make sure you have an opportunity. All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back. Mr. Hart, maybe work with Mr. Mosher to make sure we can clarify his concerns on that one. And then, fair point, Ms. Curran. So, any other comments, questions up here? Seeing none, we'll close that item. Thank you, Mr. Webb. We'll go now into public comments, so it would be time, if you wanted to come up and... Perfect. So, we'll open public comments on agenda, non-agenda items.
Hi, thank you. My name is Randy Beck. I live at 700 via Lido Nord, and I've lived in Newport since 1988, and this is about the committee going forward on the short-term, the rentals, the timing of it, the reason it made... My thoughts are with Senate Bill 330 that is going on right now, we don't even know how it's going to affect the buildings of, particularly the coastal properties. I've been working with the building department, and right now, on one home, there's already going to have to be four variances that, that you, the city allows one way of doing it, and FEMA wants another way. So, I don't know how you'd be able to make decisions for short-term lodging until we even know how, what the actual future's going to look like. And the second part is, I own an R2. I had an R1. I was 25 years old, I didn't know the difference between R1 and R2, and I sold my company, and I, for, I wanted to get a rental, because I love, I love Newport, love living here, and, and part of it was so I could sell my company and have income, and now I'm concerned that if the changes are made from an R2, and they won't allow, you know, rentals any longer, short-term, that's a problem, and especially, you know, depending on the days, because obviously, you can, you know, 35% of our, our income is three days, you know, two to three days of rental. So, I want to put it out, I just feel very strongly that I just don't think it would be fair, again, I sold a house, especially for an R2, and, and to make sure that I could rent, and this is like my livelihood, so I'm extremely concerned on that part, and again, also to be able to make a clear decision with 330 that's involved now.
Okay. Hang on just a moment. Mr. Juergens, would you mind just raising your hand for a moment? Okay. Make sure you go talk to that gentleman right there. He's the head of our Community Development Department. He'll make sure you're updated, keep, stay updated on the item.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right, next speaker.
Mayor O'Neill, my name again is Jim Mosher. This comment is about the closed session. As you know, I'm not much in favor of closed sessions, because I'm concerned that you will be asked to make decisions based on hearing just one side of a story. I once knew more about the lawsuit that's announced in the agenda than I remember now, but I do know it involves a dispute between Susan Riddle and her neighbor, John Vellali, about a commercial dock that encroaches in front of Ms. Riddle's home, and Ms. Riddle's reasonable expectation that on a change of ownership, the dock would require a new permit issued through a public process. That public process, as far as I know, never happened to Ms. Riddle's understandable frustration. I also know that the city's handling of this matter was not above reproach. Changes were made to relevant sections of the harbor code that were surreptitiously slipped in via ordinances that nominally said they were about other matters, and a long-term lease was signed under questionable authority. And I know that the new codes that were slipped in were so poorly written that a Superior Court judge, hearing this or possibly an earlier version of this lawsuit, said he could not make heads or tails of what the city's intent was before or after the language was revised. And I know that the policy about peers, commercial peers encroaching in front of other properties is something that you asked the Harbor Commission to look into further at your last meeting. For me, the main takeaway from this unfortunate episode that the city's policies need, and we need to make a real effort to do this, to be clearly stated, clearly written, as clearly as humanly possible, so that everyone involved has the same understanding of what the policies are. That's the sort of a goal that always we should be seeking to achieve, and it's one we never quite managed to. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public speakers? All right, Mr. Hart.
Thank you, Mayor O'Neill. The City Council will adjourn to closed session to discuss Item 4A, and that's the meeting with legal counsel, and to me, regarding the case of Susan Riddle versus City of Newport Beach. Thank you.
All right. We stand in recess until the 7 o'clock meeting. Thank you. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Mr. Hart, closed session report.
Thank you, Mayor O'Neill. There's no closed session report this evening.
Okay, tonight, we are going to have the invocation from Pastor John Henry from Calvary Chapel of Costa Mesa, and then remain standing while Mayor Protam Avery leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor.
Would you bow with me as we bring the happenings here tonight before the council to the Lord in prayer? We call upon His involvement in all that takes place here tonight. Heavenly Father, we thank You on behalf of all who are gathered here, and we call upon You for Your blessing upon all that takes place here tonight. We thank You for Newport Beach, this place we live, so beautiful, Lord Balboa, the Peninsula, Lido, all the beautiful, from the lowlands to the heights. And we thank You, Lord, for this opportunity tonight, to be here, to seek You and Your guidance and Your direction for all the needs to be accomplished here. So, we ask You, Lord, that for those here present right now, and the various responsibilities on the council, that You would be with them in the, in directing and guiding from the city clerk, and the attorney, and manager, and staff, and Lord, the council members, Lord, the mayor, and every aspect and all that takes place here tonight. We thank You for the authority that You have given us and You've put in place, and we ask You, Lord, we pray for our mayor, for all the officials, Lord, and all assembled here tonight, for, we ask You, Lord, for the wisdom to govern and the issues of our times and all that's taking place, the welfare and the needs of the people, equality, justice, and fair play, civil rights. We pray, Heavenly Father, that the council would work together in harmony, even when there is disagreement. We pray, Father, in fact, we take this opportunity tonight, Lord, also to ask You for this coronavirus that, Lord, it would be, go as quickly as it has come upon us, and that You would spare us and from this, these terrible times. So, Lord, we commit it all to You now, and again, Lord, all that takes place here, wisdom, guidance, and direction, everything the council needs tonight, to be led by You, and then, Lord, not only here tonight, but also in the implementation of all that takes place here, that that will flow smoothly in the hours and days ahead, out from here, for the very best, for the people of this beautiful part of the world we live in, here in Newport Beach. Won't You let it be so, Father? And it is, in Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Joining in the pledge to our great nation, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Pastor. Madam Clerk.
The city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the city council. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The city council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The city council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in the silent mode.
All right, thank you. Now, we'll go to city council announcements and oral reports from city council and committee activities. Quick reminder, if you need to go longer, it's okay, I'll bring it back at the end. So, all right, Mr. Hurdman.
I have none.
I have none.
Ms. Dixon.
I probably, let's have Diane go first, please, just like we did earlier.
All right, I'll come back.
Okay, all right.
Okay. So, I'm sorry, just a moment. So oral reports, just making sure you have none.
Yes, I do. I'm sorry.
Okay, let's, I'll come back. Go ahead.
Not used to going first, Will. All right. Just a few things to report. As chairman of the city's aviation committee, I attended along with our city manager, our deputy city manager, our city attorney, a couple of, one individual who's a member of the aviation committee himself. We attended a noise and emissions conference in San Diego last week that was well worth the time, well worth the expense in terms of learning and networking and looking towards the future. Water Quality Tidelands Committee meeting was held this month. It was a short meeting because we took a field trip and a walking field trip from the Muse Center and observed some county project that is just about finished having to do with water quality. Our Technical Departure Subcommittee has met and will be meeting again on Friday of this week. I participated in a costume judging contest at the Spirit Run last Sunday that was put on to benefit the Newport Mesa Unified School District. And this Saturday will be the Quarterly Babo Island Improvement Association meeting at the Island Fire Station at 9:00 a.m. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things. Spirit Run, I too was there. I think a lot of us were there. And I started, I guess, with the horn on the 5K. And so it was a fun day to celebrate Newport Mesa. Well, it wasn't a gun. It was a horn, bullhorn.
The air horn.
Yeah. Air horn. That was what it was. Anyway, it was a great day. It was a wonderful, I think it was the 37th annual Spirit Run, so I was proud to be there. Last Thursday, I attended the SCAG Transportation Committee meeting up in Los Angeles. That's always interesting being on the Transportation Policy Committee and dealing with transportation getting to Los Angeles from Orange County. But the big focus is OC Connect, which is a new strategic plan that's going to be finalized at the next monthly meeting. And it relates to the whole transportation networking in Los Angeles County primarily, but it's connecting Orange County with the other counties. But anyway, still trying to figure out how it's going to work for us. And, oh, one other thing. We have a slide on working wardrobes update. You might remember from the news that the warehouse facility for working wardrobe in Irvine burned down on February 2nd. And there's a temporary goodwill donation site to close. Oh, the temporary goodwill donation site is closing, has closed March 7th. And clothing, oh, because they don't have any place to store them. And clothing donations will resume in May, and we're working to set up a drop site at Oasis Senior Center. But in the meantime, for people listening and for anyone inclined to be supportive of helping working wardrobes restore their inventory of clothing for people who are working their way back into the working world. They're accepting cash donations and gifts and gift and gas cards for clients or one-day bus passes. It's all intended for people who are in economic need and getting back into the workplace and need help putting their clothing, men and women putting their clothing needs together. And you may donate at workingwardrobes.org. And that is it for now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Muldoon. Ms. Brenner.
Yes, I attended my first class as part of the Citizen Police Academy. So for the next 11 Wednesdays, I'll be part of that group. And we have about 30 people in our class. This is something that I'm finding out they do a couple of times a year and then maybe one additional one for students. Is that what I understand, John? So, yeah, this is really an exciting, I thought I knew a lot about our police department, but I was very intrigued by the agenda of what we're going to do for the next 12 Wednesdays. So that's something I would recommend anybody does that has not yet done that. I also attended the Corona Mar Residents Association Historical Resource Committee meeting where we're talking about, we met with Lee Ramos, who is on the County Historical Commission. And we met with him to talk about getting some of our sites that we have in Newport Beach designated that we thought the Five Crowns was designated, and we thought that Sherman Gardens was, and the Kirkoff Lab, and come to find off, we've got, the Goldenrod Bridge is, but we've got several other sites that we'd like to get listed on the historical resources for the county. So we'll be working on that. I also attended the Friends of Oasis General Membership Luncheon to talk about really getting an oral history program going in our city. They've been doing some. The Arts Commission has done some. And our Arts Commission is going to be working on that in greater detail and really helping us to form an umbrella organization for all of these historical resources. This Thursday morning, the Corona Mar Chamber has their regular governmental affairs breakfast. And they meet at 7:30 a.m. at the Bahia Corinthian. They're going to be talking, they're going to have an expert there to talk about the 405 widening project. I didn't even know there was a 405 widening project coming up, so it sounds like something that we need to find out about. And then this coming week, our homeless ad hoc committee will be meeting with Dr. Clayton Chow, who is head of Mind OC. That's the county mental health organization that's helping to resolve the mental health issues with our homeless population. And Dr. Chow has indicated a willingness to work with us. And we want to make sure that we are really tapping into all the resources available for people that are homeless that have mental health issues. So we'll be working closely with them and hoping to address some of our needs in our community, and that's it.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Duffield.
Thank you, Mayor. Tomorrow night, the famous Dave Webb will be speaking at the Speak of Newport. And the community room across the way there starts at 5:15. The show starts at 6:00. If you ever wanted to know about dredging our harbor, this is where you need to come. And it'll be so exciting, you cannot miss it. There'll be water, all kinds of things like water. So honestly, though, if you, for those who are concerned about issues that are having, coming up on the dredging, there is your chance to listen and make suggestions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Avery.
I have the pleasure of sitting on an extraordinary board, and that's the Orange County Sanitation District, representing all the cities in Orange County. A council member from every city in Orange County and also members of the water boards attend these meetings. And it's phenomenal. And so I attended the regular board meeting, and I also sat on the operations committee meeting. They met last week. And it's, we're all just very fortunate to have an operation like the Orange County Sanitation District, serving 2.6 million people of Orange County. Thank you.
Thank you. I was able to give state of city speeches to Harborview Hills Community Association, Babo Yacht Club, Wake Up Newport, Distinguished Citizens Program. So thank you to them. I was also able to get up and do the 6:30 start for the 10K at the Newport Mesa, which I will never do again. And then Newport Harbor High School had their blood drive today. I went over and gave some blood. If you're able to, I'd suggest giving blood now. They're going to, they'll probably start, it'll start being more difficult, I'm guessing, to donate blood. So if you can do it, do it now. That'd be, that'd be really important. And then I have a quick slide. So over on Babo Boulevard, we've got a utility undergrounding project going along. $3.8 million project to remove the power, phone, and cable lines. We're paying it through an assessment district. Construction began in July 2019. They're working on Babo Boulevard right now. We're about 65% complete overall, although many sections have 100% completions actually expected in June, assuming that weather allows us to do so. And I, this, hang on, go back one second. So this is an underground vault, this blue thing right here. It's almost 30,000 pounds. It's pretty amazing. And then you can see all these hoses coming around right underneath it. That's sucking up all the water that you get really fast under the ocean, which then goes through a purification, then goes right back into the bay. It's pretty incredible. And so you can see that giant crane down there. All right, let's see who's operating it. Let's go to the next slide. Yep, that guy. No, I'm just, that's the mayor. They absolutely shut that thing off before they even allowed me to, just to be clear. But it was a lot of fun. So we're, yeah, we're making a lot of progress and tons of infrastructure is happening in our city. And I want to keep highlighting all of the things that go on underneath our streets because we're doing a whole lot. And for those of you who missed it during the study session, we were talking CIP. And if you live on Lido Island, get prepared, we're going to be replacing all the water underground, the water mains. So that'll start up in the fall. We'll make sure you get plenty of notice. All right, let's move on. Let me pull up the agenda. We'll go into, let's see, I want to make sure, yeah, there you go. So matters which council members have asked to be placed on a future agenda. This item was placed on by Councilmember Muldoon. I had a quick clarifying question. My understanding that on this was that you were asking for a specific property. This is saying all of the industrial zone. Was it a specific property? Are you, were you looking for the entire industrial zone?
Two things. First off, I recuse myself from that item that Mayor gave as an update because I'm involved in telecom and sometimes utilities involve telecom. Second off, this is not a time for discussion on the matter, I believe, under the rules. But I will say that I had the same question, and it's supposed to come back as different options in the staff report.
Okay. All right. If you're interested, if you'd support bringing this back, raise your hand. Okay.
That was five, five to two.
Okay. All right.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you raise your hands again, then? I'm sorry, four to three. Councilmembers Avery, Dixon, and Hurdman did not raise their hands.
To be clear, just out in the audience, that's not a vote on the item itself. It's to bring it back, and you only need three votes to bring something back. So that will be brought back. All right. Public comments on consent calendar. Madam Clerk.
This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items 1 through 9. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
All right. Note, before we begin, we did have some clarifications on the consent calendar. The study session, to the extent that council members would like to repeat those clarifications, you're welcome to do so. Councilors there, would you like to pull any items? Mr. Hurdman.
I don't want to pull any items, but regarding Agenda Item Number 4, my colleague Dixon, would you like to go ahead?
Item Number 3.
Pardon?
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's number 4.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
May I go first and then, Mayor, do you mind if I go first and then?
Go ahead. Sorry.
So in regard to Agenda Item Number 4, the resolution reestablishing the ad hoc committee on short-term lodging, I just wanted to reiterate for our audience and for our residents that I think it is very important that the committee consider all of the public comments that were made in regards to the proposed ordinance and come back to council with a well-reasoned proposal. As everyone knows, the public comments we heard during our consideration of the proposed short-term lodging ordinance a couple of weeks ago revealed that many people are being seriously impacted by short-term rentals. If the council moves forward with reestablishing the committee, it will be my goal to come back to the council with a well-thought-out recommendation as expeditiously as possible.
And before we vote on Agenda Item Number 4, the resolution reestablishing the ad hoc committee on short-term lodging, I just want to let everyone know that I have closed out my short-term lodging permit. I closed the permit not because of a conflict of interest, but because I believe that the issue related to short-term lodging or issues related to short-term lodging are so important, I don't want there to even be a hint that I am making my decisions for some personal benefit.
Okay. Mr. Muldoon.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a recusal on Item 5 due to business interests. This traffic signal rehabilitation at times can include a wireless component.
Okay. Ms. Brenner.
Yes, also on Item 4, after reviewing all comments and concerns, I feel that treating the non-coastal zones differently than the coastal zone by banning STLs outside of the coastal zone is probably not the way to continue. I think we should amend the resolution to provide that the committee will not consider a proposal which would impose additional regulations on the non-coastal zone that are different than the coastal zone.
Okay. Mr. Duffield. All right. Mr. Avery. Okay, and I have none. So, Mr. Avery, you have the motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Just real quick, I think you also closed out your short-term lodging permit as well.
Yes, I did. Yes.
I just want to make sure the record is clear on that.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I move the balance of the consent calendars, 1 through 9, with the exception of, there are no items actually to be pulled. And we have just one recusal from Mr. Muldoon on Item Number 5. And we also have amendments on Items 1, which are the minutes. And Item 3, we will be incorporating Councilmember Brenner's notes in her resolution into Item 4, into the, is continued, right?
Yeah. So, sorry, I confused the items. So 3 is continued and Item 4 includes her. Okay, got it. Okay, do we have a second for that?
I'll second.
Our second by Mr. Hurdman. We'll go out to public comment. Do we have public comment on the consent calendar?
Mayor O'Neill, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I don't usually reiterate my written comments on the consent calendar. It's good to see that the possible conflict of interest issues with Item 4 are being resolved. And on the following item, Item 5, which is about the completion of a contract for traffic signal rehabilitation, I would just reiterate the written comment. I noticed when this firm left the job site, some of the signals were green in two different directions opposing each other at the same time. And I'm not sure we should entirely congratulate them on a job well done. It's not good to have green lights in two directions at once. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on consent calendar? All right, we'll bring it back. We have a motion and a second, so let's vote.
The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Thank you. We have no items removed from the consent calendar, so we'll move to public comments on non-agenda items. Do we have any public comments on non-agenda items?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, my name is David Tanner. I wanted to bring to your attention and to the attention of the folks at home tonight that the city is putting on an earthquake safety presentation on March 25th. I think this is something that everyone should pay attention to. It's being put on by a gal from Caltech, very bright gal. And I note that it's at the Marina Park Community Center in the evening from 6:00 to 7:00. I would invite those of you that have time to come to come and listen and ask questions. I'd also like to ask, because I don't believe it's going to occur, that this be videotaped so that those that can't occur, because space is limited in the room where it's being held, that it be videotaped and put on the city's website so that those people that cannot come, that have an interest, can hear the presentation. So just wanted to let everybody know, thank the city for having this event. I think it's very worthwhile. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on non-agenda items?
Could we get the date and time on that again, please?
Oh, sorry, Mr. Tanner.
It's March 25th at 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. It happens to be the same night that the new housing committee is meeting on. So because of that, there are going to be a number of interested people that aren't going to be able to attend, and that's why I think it's another good reason to have it videotaped. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Mosher.
Yeah, thank you. On that last point from Mr. Tanner, he's asking that the earthquake presentation be videotaped. And as he pointed out, people have to choose between going that and going to the first meeting of the Housing Element Update Advisory Committee, which is doing the very important work of figuring out how to accommodate the 4,800... whatever it is, units that the city has to do. I would recommend that all those meetings also be videotaped and that the council direct staff to do that, as it did with the steering committee meetings, so that people who cannot attend those or later become interested in them can go back and see what actually happened. The other non-agenda comment I wanted to make is to remind you that on February 21, you adopted a lobbyist registration ordinance, ordinance 2020-3, which if I, my math is correct, it's going to become effective two days from now on Thursday. It applies to people who are paid $500 or more in a month to communicate on behalf of a client with you, the council members, with any board, commission, or committee member, with the staff department heads and the deputy department heads. However, on our website, there has been no warning. I don't know how the people who on Thursday are supposed to register know about this. So it seems incumbent upon you, the council, and the staff and so forth, when somebody communicates with you to ask, are they being paid? And if they say they are being paid, you need to inform them about this new rule and tell them that they need to register with the clerk. But part of the ordinance is you were supposed to establish the fee for them to do that. I don't think the fee has yet been determined. So the clerk may have a little trouble with the forms. But anyway, I am hoping you will inform people that we have this ordinance because it seems to be a very low-key rollout compared to how it's been in some other cities. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back. It's a fair point by Mr. Mosher, so we should probably make sure it's up there. Is it? Oh, Mr. Harp.
Oh, just realized, I was just talking to the city clerk. So it will be up and running on the city website before the, before it goes into effect. And then the fee, it was in the staff report that there's not going to be a fee for the first year. We're going to see how much, how many people we get and what the costs are, and then we'll put it in the second year.
Okay. Ms. Brenner?
Should there be a public announcement about that on our website that lobbyists need to register?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. And I'll work with the city clerk on that.
And in addition to that, what about videotaping those meetings? Are we going to be videotaping those? And will they be shown on Newport Beach TV?
So, so those meetings will be videotaped. They'll be held in the, in the council chambers?
For the Housing Element?
Committee, correct.
Okay. What about the earthquake? Is that, is that one going to be videotaped?
It's not planned.
They could use more programming on Newport Beach TVs, so, just saying.
All right, we're going to move into our public hearing. Before we do that, what school are y'all from? Newport Harbor? Awesome, welcome. All right, so public hearing, we're going to go into item number 10. Item number 10 has a very lengthy staff report. I thought it did a great job. Instead, in lieu of asking for a staff report or a staff presentation, given the number of times this, this issue has come before us, my plan is to ask staff to actually respond to some of the written comments. Does anyone feel the need to have a, okay, good. All right, so we received some, so this is, this is directed to staff. So we received some comments through letters from, so for example, Mr. Tanner, Ms. Gardner, we received one, I think, this afternoon from an organization up, I can't recall, Los Angeles, was it? Anyway, it was, but there were some, there were some interesting points made on a somewhat convoluted, complicated issue. So if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to hear some, some responses to, to some of those comments so that the full council can, can weigh those in. So whoever would like to go, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Simone Georgios, you Community Development Director. I have with me is Jaime Mario, who's worked on this project here, this addendum. Jaime Mario is the principal planner, and I'm going to have him kind of go ahead and jump in and try to address some of Mr. Tanner's questions first.
Thank you, Simone. So Mr. Tanner's questions and comments, I think primarily relate to whether or not the city has the capacity to accommodate the total number of ADUs that could potentially be built through this new code. The city or the state essentially removed a lot of the restrictions and the ability for the city to regulate accessory dwelling units. So in theory, every single-family property and multifamily property could essentially construct an accessory dwelling unit or a JADU. And so there's a capacity of over 20,000 units that could potentially be built. And so part of his comments are, how does our general plan relate to that? And under state law, they made it very clear that accessory dwelling units are considered accessory to the principal use of the property and are not subject to general plan limits and are not subject to any limits or voter initiatives related to density. And so we're not able to amend our general plan, and it's not inconsistent with the general plan. In terms of infrastructure capacity, it's speculative to assume that every property will develop an ADU immediately or ever. We do anticipate there will be an influx in ADUs over time as property owners become more aware and developers become aware of the opportunities that ADUs present. But in the last two years, we've had a total of 11 ADUs permitted. And in discussions with our utilities division, we'll continue to monitor the capacity of our utilities and our infrastructure. And as the need arises, the infrastructure will be updated or upsized as needed. In response, I think Aaron has a question.
Let me jump in real quick. I think that he also raised a question about whether or not if the, this ordinance is not adopted, what would happen? And in essence, the state's basically said that if you don't adopt a new ordinance, then you follow state law. And part of the reason we're adopting a new ordinance is because we think there's some areas where we can be more restrictive than state law. He also raised a question about SEQA and whether or not adoption of the ordinance was in compliance with SEQA. So this ordinance is statutorily exempt from SEQA, and we believe that applies in this situation. So there shouldn't be any type of issue there. And he also raised some questions about the impacts of the ordinance. But we're basically trying to comply with state law. Those impacts are going to happen no matter what, whether the city adopts the ordinance or not. So I think that covered the bulk of his questions, but I'm happy to answer any specific ones that you have.
Did you, did you also have an opportunity to look at the letter that we got in from Californians for homeownership?
I did. They've been sending that letter out to, basically all the cities are adopting these types of ordinances. And ultimately, we have to submit our ordinance to HCD. We recognize that there's some areas where we're definitely trying to do all we can under our local control. And so we'll wait, probably wait for comments back from HCD. They have submitted, and I believe they have 60 days to review. Is that correct?
Yeah, we have 60 days to submit our ordinance once adopted, and they'll review and submit comments to the city.
We'll probably rely on HCD. So I think the game plan is we'll submit to HCD. We believe all the provisions are authorized and legal. If for some reason they don't believe that any of those provisions are, then we'll meet with them and talk to them about that.
Okay. Were there any other questions up here before I go out to public comment? All right, seeing none, we'll go out to public comment on this item. If you would like to provide public comment, please come forward.
David Tanner, I'd like to say that staff has mischaracterized my written comments. And I think the city attorney also dodged the heart of what I was trying to say. In my comments, I didn't mention density or dwelling units. He's right in what he said, but what I talked about was population increase and additional households. And these were defined terms. And so what this amendment that you're looking at or this ordinance that you're looking at is going to do is, within the coastal zone, it's going to allow basically a doubling of the population. That's what's going to happen. You're doing this without any environmental review. The pretext, the premise of any exemption statutorily or categorically under SEQA is that the action will have no environmental effect on the environment. That's the pretext of all of them. So the other thing I'm saying, which they're not talking about, is that this is part of a larger project. This is part of the general plan update. It's half of the local coastal plan. It's the implementation component. Why they didn't talk about this, I don't know. You might ask them. But there's a land use component. And by increasing one, you're increasing the other, and these are together. And the local coastal plan is part of the local coastal plan. That's subject to SEQA. It's also part of the general plan. It's subject to SEQA. So I'm not saying, don't approve the ordinance. That's what he said. I'm saying, don't approve it now. Wait until the appropriate time, which is after you've updated the local coastal plan land use component. So you have a complete document to give to the coastal commission. And this would occur after you've updated the general plan. So by all means, give the ordinance, do it. It's a matter of timing. And I want the city council to do this after they have considered the environmental effects of potentially doubling the population. That's what the law says. We have no control over it. We don't know how many are going to be built. It's just like the coronavirus, where somebody says, well, we're only going to have 20 cases. We have to plan for the worst and hope for the best. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other comments on this item?
Mayor O'Neill, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. As I, I see staff is continuing, struggling, trying to get the language of the ordinance right. As I mentioned at your, before you went into your closed session, getting the language of ordinance is correct is very important. Getting the language of bills so that they can be understood is also important. And our state legislature didn't really do an outstanding job, which generated these letters. There's various interpretations of what they wrote. Some of it is pretty inscrutable. Our city staff is making a valiant effort to try to integrate it into our own code. As I said in writing, I think this is kind of a fool's errand to try to update all the various tables that we have, since the new state code overrides all these tables. As an example here on, I guess this is about the second page of their changes, they found where we had a density thing in something called table 2.2, which they're correcting. Had they looked, which is for single-family homes, says now you can have not just one unit, but also an accessory dwelling unit. Had they gone further and looked in table 2.3, which is for Balboa Island and R2 zones, that also has a similar provision. And it says no more than two units per lot. So that would have to be corrected. The coastal implementation plan has various tables for the planned communities, which are a big part of our city. And some of those say accessory dwelling units. Some of them are silent. We're, we have a very inconsistent code if we try to do this. I suggested some additional corrections this afternoon, which seemed to be largely ignored. One thing I think, which is important, I think are, there may be more ways to read this in one, but I think our staff is misinterpreting the parking requirement for ADUs, which the state code pretty clearly, and this is one thing it says clearly, the parking requirement for a normal ADU is one parking space per ADU unit or number of bedrooms, whichever is less. And it's clear from other parts of their code, they anticipate an ADU may not have a bedroom in it. It's not a requirement that it does. If it does not, then the parking requirement is zero. And our code is contrary to that. Anyway, it's very frustrating trying to comment on so many pages in so short a time. I just wanted to point out for the new short-term lodging committee, this has interesting interplay between short-term rental of homes and these ADUs, which can only by state law be rented, if they are to be rented for more than 30 days. You can apparently rent out a whole room, a whole house for less than 30 days, but you can't rent out the ADU part of it if it has one in it. So I don't know if that has to be cordoned off during the short-term rental or what. Thank you. Laws are very curious.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of this council. My name is Charles Klob. I fully support the comments written and oral by Mr. Tanner and Mr. Mosher. It seems clear to me that this isn't quite well enough baked to pass tonight. There's enough question to put it off, and I don't see a reason to push it through tonight, even though it's on the staff agenda to get it done. I don't see any penalty for putting it off. And if the argument they make is correct, that hardly any of them are getting permitted anyway, it seems best to get it right. Secondly, in the mayor's three-pronged approach to dealing with the arena number, one of them is legal. I'd like to make sure you understand if you're helping or hurting yourself in the legal arena for, by approving this now or even anytime in the future before the general plan is updated. Thank you, so.
Thank you. Any other speakers? All right, let's bring it back. So, Mr. Harp, let's just work, work backwards for a second. So let's assume this isn't passed. What happens tomorrow?
So if it's not passed, then in essence, you would just be following the state law.
So any, any part of our code that is already inconsistent with the state code goes away, even though it's on our books?
That's right.
And so that code is worse for the city than, from a policy standpoint, than what's been proposed in the language right here?
We believe that what's being proposed is stricter than what is in the state law. And there's an exhibit that kind of lays out exactly how.
Yeah. Mr. Muldoon?
Same line of questioning, Mr. Mayor. I had, could you explain how it's more restrictive in our version versus the default state code will be forced to accept?
So, Councilmember Muldoon, we actually do have a table. If we can put it up on the projecting screen.
Thank you.
And do you want to go through that?
So the state law really restricted a lot of what we could change. But there's still some provisions that the law allows us to regulate further than what the state standards would allow. And so this table kind of goes through them briefly. But in terms of zone, we really can't regulate where they can go. They have to be allowed in all residential zones. But down in maximum unit size is probably one of the biggest things we do benefit from. Under state standards, the maximum unit size for an accessory dwelling unit is 1,200 square feet. If we adopt an ordinance, we can reduce the maximum unit size to 850 square feet for one bedroom units or 1,000 square feet for two bedroom units. Another
Briefly on that one, could you please explain why that's a better outcome for us in the end?
For us, regulating the size of an ADU really tries to maintain it more as an accessory to the principal use of the property. So generally, we're seeing these in conjunction with single-family residences. Trying to maintain the character of the community and that single-family feel of the neighborhood by allowing larger units. It's essentially allowing a duplex on that property. So the more we can regulate the size, it's more of a, like an accessory use as it's intended to be.
That's a perfect answer. Is it also less of intensity or use on our facility, infrastructure, like water and power?
Yeah, we think so. And potentially, it has a smaller capacity for occupants as well.
Thank you. Keep going.
In terms of side and rear setbacks, the code does, or the state law does, limit the setbacks we can apply for an accessory dwelling unit. So we have to allow four-foot side and rear yard setbacks. However, through the adoption of the ordinance, we are requiring an exception for rear yard setbacks adjacent to an alley. So typically, in the older parts of our neighborhoods where we have narrow alleys, we require properties to provide a five-foot setback from the rear property line that's clear and unobstructed to allow for increased vehicular maneuverability and access for fire trucks and police and whatever emergency services. And so we're, we've implemented that in our draft ordinance to maintain the five-foot setback for alleys and that they have to be clear.
So this ordinance provides extra protection for aesthetics, density, infrastructure, and first responders?
Correct. And I have a couple more areas where we are able to apply additional standards. So in terms of height, it does limit our ability to restrict units to 16 feet tall. However, we actually are creating an exception to allow for taller ADUs if they're constructed above a garage, provided the structure maintains the baseline zoning district setbacks. So for example, if the base zoning requires a 10-foot setback for the rear, we'll allow higher height limit if the ADU is pulled back compliant with our baseline setbacks. And also a requirement that the code required parking for the principal unit is being provided within that garage. And so that's trying to encourage additional parking and overall compliance. And then another major benefit of this is state law essentially says that a property can convert their garage and not replace the parking. So for So for example, a single-family home can convert a garage and then into an ADU, have two units and have no parking, or in the case of a duplex, the garage parking for that duplex can be converted to a third unit as an ADU and not replace the parking. But because the state law doesn't supersede the California Coastal Act, we have included a provision in our proposed LCP draft of the code that would prohibit the conversion of garages within the coastal zone unless replacement parking is provided. And the intent of that is to preserve public access and public parking for that access, and we believe that is consistent with the Coastal Act. We've had discussions with coastal staff who believe that garage conversions are an issue, and so we believe that they will be acceptable of this provision. And then another benefit is that we can prohibit short-term lodging within ADUs through a deed restriction, but we can only do that with the adoption of an ordinance, and so that's another benefit. And lastly, we are adding some basic design requirements that an accessory dwelling would be designed to match the principal dwelling, and that again is to maintain the appearance of a single-family home and not the appearance of a duplex on a specific lot.
Excellent. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, just a few more questions. If you could clarify what Mr. Tanner was speaking about, the advantage of waiting to the general plan, our city's general plan was updated. What are the pluses and minuses of that strategy?
You know, Mr. Tanner was really focusing on the environmental side of it, is looking at it comprehensively, including it through the land use element. And so once we amend the land use element or our housing element, we're going to have to do that CECL review. So incorporating these ADUs into the housing and land use elements, and then you could do the environmental study with that. But from a staff's perspective, we're looking at this as that this is actually an exempt ordinance, and so you don't need to do the environmental review at this time if the council chooses to go ahead and adopt the ordinance.
But at the time we go through our general plan and the housing element, could we do it?
We're going to include it all.
Well, we'll include it. Okay.
Correct.
Number two, relating to side and rear setbacks, is four feet what we currently require?
No. So depending on the zoning district, in some cases, we only require a three-foot side setback, in some cases, a zero. But in other zoning districts, you know, such as Senate Heights, we require a five-foot side yard and maybe a 25-foot rear yard. And so this requirement that we have to allow four-foot side and rear does expand the areas where ADUs can be built on a lot of properties.
And then narrows the distance between adjacent buildings. So it is changing our zoning and land use application in the city, correct?
Correct, as far as ADUs are concerned.
Part as a mandate from the state legislature. And also, on the parking issue, as you noted, the Coastal Act supersedes this legislation or this new law. Do we have that confirmed? Do we have to...what kind of formal action do we have to validate that, or can that...can the Coastal Commission say, "No, we'll go along with this"? I mean, how do we know that that's a firm restriction or requirement that we must provide parking?
So our prohibition against the garage conversions, it's something that we discussed with Coastal Commission staff. However, the Coastal Commission has not put out like a formal guidance document yet. I think it's something they're going to present to the Coastal Commission. However, as part of this, we have to submit our draft regulations to the Coastal Commission, and they'll review and comment. So we're hopeful that they see the benefit of prohibiting the garage conversions in support of public access, so we're hopeful that passes.
Hopeful. Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Brenner.
I had a question on the owner occupancy, where it says, "J-ADU owner to live in either unit and ADU not allowed until 1/25." What does that mean?
So prior to this last state law change, we had the ability to prohibit, not prohibit, we had the ability to actually require owner occupancy. So a homeowner wanted to construct an ADU, they had to live in either the principal unit or the ADU. As part of this last state law change, they've suspended that temporarily until 2025, and the intent behind that was to hopefully spur the development of more ADUs to address the housing crisis. And so that would allow for a developer to construct an ADU and a single-family home or add ADUs to multi-unit buildings. After 2025, we can add that restriction back on.
My, okay. And just the fact that we can prohibit short-term rentals in these units for right now seems to be a point in favor of enacting this, that we can keep that from happening right away, especially while we're trying to consider what we're doing with short-term lodging?
Definitely, yes. I mean, the intent of state law is to provide increased housing opportunities, not an ability for someone to build an ADU and use it for like Airbnb-type rentals.
All right.
Okay. Any other comments up here? Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll move the item.
I'll second.
All right. Any discussion?
Just briefly, there was an amended ordinance that was circulated earlier today.
All right. Incorporated into your motion, Mr. Muldoon, and into your second. Okay. All right. Let's vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for ordinance number 2020-9, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach, adopting zoning code amendment number CA 2019-009 to repeal and replace section 20.48.200 accessory dwelling units of Title 20, planning and zoning, and amend related provisions of the Newport Beach Municipal Code applicable to accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units pursuant to state law. The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
All right. We'll move on to our next item, which is sculpture exhibition in Civic Center Park, Phase 5. Who will be giving the presentation?
Good evening to our Mayor O'Neill and to members of the council. I'm here tonight to introduce Rick Stein of Art Association, Professor Joe Lewis of the Claire Trevor School of Arts, to give a presentation on sculpture exhibition in
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Richard Stein, President and CEO of Arts Orange County. We're the countywide nonprofit arts council, and we're the designated local arts agency of the County of Orange. And it's a pleasure for us and a privilege for us to be working with you again on Phase 5 of the sculpture exhibition in Civic Center Park. And this evening, we're going to walk you through some of what you've actually already seen in your packets, of course. So I'd like to talk a little bit about our team. I have Joe Lewis, who is a professor of art at UC Irvine with us today, and he has worked with us for the past several years on the project, and Nicholas Thirketel, who is a program manager with Arts Orange County. The fifth phase of the sculpture exhibition had a call to artists that was launched in November of 2019, and the call was open for eight weeks. And we disseminated that call through over 30 different outlets that artists are familiar with in terms of seeking opportunities to submit their works, and this attracted submissions from all over the world. There were 61 submissions that were officially received, and eight of them came from foreign countries, 14 U.S. states, and 28 of the artists were based here in California, eight of them here in Orange County. The seven members of the City Arts Commission plus two outside jurors voted on all of the works online through the platform. And after a preliminary evaluation of the eligibility, 52 works were presented in an advisory public poll where voters could designate up to three favorites. The poll logged 2,343 accepted votes from 1,084 individual voters, and it closed on February 7. The high-scoring works from the jury and the public poll, or both, were combined into a list of 25 finalist candidates for closer scrutiny at the Arts Commission's February 13 meeting. At this public meeting, after open discussion and public input and advisory information from installation experts, the City Arts Commission then identified and voted for the recommended selections you'll see this evening, as well as three alternates. And I'll review them shortly, but just to let you know that installation of Phase 5 is scheduled to take place during the week of May 18, and the official opening of the exhibition is taking place on Saturday, June 6. The criteria that were employed in considering the works included artistic merit, durability, practicality, and site appropriateness. And the judges included the full City Arts Commission, and the two outside jurors are known art experts in our community, David Michael Lee, curator and director of the Coastline Art Gallery, and Tyler Stallings, director of the Frank Doyle Arts Pavilion at Orange Coast College and a former curator of the Laguna Art Museum. The outside jurors participated in everything up until the official vote. They did not participate in that. That vote was strictly the City Arts Commission. These are your 10 recommended selections. The first one is by Nancy Muslin, who is a Southern California artist, and this is a whimsical, fun-for-all-ages series of six arches, very colorful. It has been exhibited in the region previously, and it is intended for this open field site where Feathers on the Wind is currently located, and I'll talk about that a little bit later. And we've shown in these images for scale human figures to help you evaluate that. The next item is by one of the most popular artists who's exhibited in the Civic Center Park previously. Patricia Vader had a work called Sunflower, which was in Phase 2, and Cosmic Glints in Phase 3. She frequently uses bicycle wheels, and this is probably the most colorful that we've seen come from her. It is very popular with the public, and here's an opportunity to see the scale. It's called "The Unbearable Lightness of Being." The next work is a painted steel sculpture called Nude Ascending, and this is very much a tongue-in-cheek satire of the famous 1912 Marcel Duchamp work called Nude Ascending. It's a famous modernist painting, and, you know, again, this is a wonderful bit of humor and color brought into the park, some interesting scale to it, and this gives you a sense of how it would look in place. The next work is called Cosmo, and this is a work of kinetic art, and so it has moving parts to it in the wind, and it has been exhibited at Burning Man Festival previously, and on its site, it will certainly catch the wind. Ron Whittaker's Marble Shooter is also, you know, a lot of fun. It's figurative, large-size hand shooting a marble. It will be elevated onto a plinth that will be constructed specifically for view here in the park. This is another work that was exhibited at Burning Man, and it's called Individuality Number One. It's by a team of two artists, and it's quite large. It's 14 feet high and 12 feet long, and it's comprised of a variety of materials, metal, mosaic, and paint. Again, it's very colorful, whimsical, quizzical, and I think this will be very popular, particularly that little figure hanging in the circle there. This is a figurative bronze by Southern California artist Monica Wyatt called "I'm Listening," and depicts two parents who are bending over to listen to their child, or maybe not. Maybe they're telling the child to listen to them. So this will also be elevated on a plinth that will be installed for this purpose. Kurt Brill was exhibited in our very first phase with Brandy, and this one is called Seated Diana. He's well-known for his bronzes that look sort of like molten...like this is a molten lava super heroine, and the mythical figure of Diana is depicted. Window to the Sea by a local Newport Beach artist, Andra Brockelshen, is an opportunity to have a wonderful viewpoint up in the park, colorful and decorative, and its placement will offer a sea view, as it promises with its title. Link of Humanity is comprised of nine stacked bronze links, and it is an abstract that, you know, is open to interpretation. And then the Feathers in the Wind, which is currently on the site where the fractured piece arches would be sited, would be moved over to the site close to, but not right next to, the bunnies. So it would be fairly close to where it's located now. And then this gives you an overview of all of the various locations from the Phase 4, which continues, as you know, for another year, and then the addition of the Phase 5 in red and those locations. And finally, we do have three alternates. These are backups, of course, in case something occurs in terms of the contracting or the delivery of the other works, although every effort has been made to be in communication throughout this process with the artists who were under serious consideration, and we do not believe that we are going to have the necessity of selecting an alternate. This one in particular, there was some question about, because this really is a two-dimensional work of mosaic, and the ability to exhibit it in a suitable way has been debated. So I'm not sure that that's something that would be the top choice for an alternate, as lovely as it is. Grant Irish, his work Decline was exhibited in, I believe it was Phase 2 of the exhibition, and this is an alternate that the City Arts Commission found very appealing. And then Alex G., this is the same artist who did the Feathers in the Wind, and again, he's...he likes to depict his Native American ancestry in his themes, and this piece, Arrow, actually sits on... sits on a pedestal that comes along with the art. So that is the end of our presentation. We'd be happy to answer any questions you have, and thank you for your time.
Any questions up here? Ms. Dixon.
First of all, now, this is about the fifth? Is this the fifth?
Fifth phase, yes.
So first of all, one of the things I noticed, I was just taking mental notes here, that I think all but one is from a California artist, two, one or two. Personally, I would like to see 100% all of them from California artists. I don't know if that's possible, but I'm glad to see that that is skewing more Native California and just makes it unique. Since this is the fifth year, are there any comments to make about what we're learning in the process? What kind of reputation is the city achieving with this program? If you can give us some qualitative feedback, that'd be interesting.
Sure. Well, I think first and foremost, it seems to have proven very popular with Newport Beach residents, and I'm sure it's something that you see when you're up in the park, people taking note of the works, taking pictures of the works, and also, it is certainly an attraction for visitors as well. It has attracted, I think, increased interest from artists in submitting, and artists of quality. So with submissions from around the world, one of the things that we did learn was the challenges of dealing with those kinds of submissions, because the lead time in terms of shipping works, say, from Ukraine or Spain, where we had submissions, would not make it possible for the works to be installed in time for the opening, and in many cases, the honorariums that are being offered the artists are insufficient to cover the costs of crating and shipping them those long distances. So one of the things that we intend to do, we don't want to eliminate the opportunity for, or we recommend that you not eliminate the opportunity for artists around the world to submit their works, but as long as their works are already here in the United States, then it makes it much easier to fulfill the installation.
So do you see any advantage of narrowing the scope in terms of geographic representation? Is there advantage to having the world and having Ukraine, or would it, I mean, you...
Some of the most popular works in the public poll were from abroad, and I think while we are a creative crucible here in California, and particularly Southern California, I think that there is a lot to be said about cross-pollination through having works from different cultures and perspectives and media exhibited here as well to provide that variety. This, I would say, Phase 5 has the most variety in terms of the styles of works that we've had in any of the prior phases, too. So that's something that I think is noteworthy about this particular grouping.
And I also like that, what, about 2,500 residents voted?
Yeah.
I'd have sex on, so that's good. Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Hurdman.
I don't have any questions. I just want to make a few comments. I want to commend the Arts Commission under the leadership of Arlene Greer. Just another outstanding job, but even more extensive this year than it has been in years past, I think, in terms of the breadth of the art and the art selection process. And I want to echo what Diane said as far as the community involvement in the selection of the art. I know how much work you put into this. I want to commend you for it. I want to thank you for bringing this to the city, not only to the people in Newport Beach, but to the people who visit our city from the region, from other states, and from even out of the United States. It truly is a jewel of our city, and when I look at the number of pieces of art that are going to be on display after Phase 5 is installed, that's impressive. It's quite a place. So keep up the good work, and thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Brenner.
Yes, I just wanted to say I was pleased to see more local artists represented, and especially the CDM artist in the Window to the Sea, because it's a theme and an artist that really represents our local area. So I was really pleased about that, and I wondered about the 2,343 votes. Do you know, is that up from what we've had in the past? Are we starting to get more votes?
Yes, it is significantly more.
Is it?
Fifty percent more.
That's great. People are getting used to this now. Good job.
All right. Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you. No questions for you from me, maybe Mr. Avery does, but staff, what's the dollar amount on this item again?
Sorry, $141,000, but the costs are supplanted by the state grant from the California Department of Parks and Recreation.
So the entire budgeted amount is covered by the state?
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Avery.
Well, I just, I've said this before, I just think great cities, great societies, you know, it's, their art is a reflection of the people that built those great societies and great cities, and I think this is tremendous. It's so great for the city. We are a city of culture, we are a city of creative people, and we like to share what we have. We share our beaches, we share our restaurants, and we share art, you know, and it's tremendous. And to solve for not costing the taxpayer, but just by virtue of other generous organizations and people were able to do this, and it's a great partnership, wonderful use of the Civic Center here, and I just applaud the Arts Commission and everybody that's involved to make this happen, and obviously, it's a lot of work. I look at these pieces, and I just think of the effort to bring them in and get them set properly, and I know dealing with each artist must be interesting as well. So I commend you, and thank you very much.
All right. I think that's everything from up here, so we'll open public comment in just a moment.
Thank you very much, and I just want to say congratulations, and this is not our exhibit, Arts OC's. This is your exhibit, and it's just a privilege for us to assist in facilitating the process. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. All right. Would you like to speak first before we go to public comment, Ms. Greer? Okay, come on up.
Mayor O'Neill, Mayor Pro Tem Avery, and the honorable City Council members. Newport Beach's Civic Center, much of this has already been said. The exhibition is nationally recognized now as our museum without walls. I just love that term. I think it really defines what happens out in the Civic Center. With your support, we'll be celebrating the installation of Phase 5 and its ongoing presentation of diverse, influential, and inspirational works of art all June 6, 2020, from 1 until 4. The program, which has received the $500,000 state grant, is a reflection of Newport Beach's love of family and community, its quest for recreational and educational outreach, and its goal of providing a multitude of diverse, entertaining, and enriching social and cultural activities. My sincere thanks to all members of our City Arts Commission who spent countless hours working with Arts OC to curate the selection that you see here today. Over the next several weeks, if the council approves our proposal this evening, the works will arrive and be installed throughout the Civic Center Sculpture Garden, with an eye towards our opening, and this is all very exciting and something everyone in the community can sort of see from the street. The festivities will commence at 1 o'clock in the afternoon. Mayor O'Neill will be introducing the artists. There will be refreshments, a no-host bar, children's activities, interactive performances with the art, and an opportunity to meet all the artists of Phase 5 and discuss their works with them, because they'll be out in the garden again on opening day to meet and greet the people who come from the community and to discuss their artworks. Again, I would like to thank each and every one of you for supporting this program in the past, your continued support presently, in advance if you so choose to do so, and your future support is greatly appreciated. I've talked with each and every one of you over the years. Your involvement has been immense, and it has really made a difference. I'd like to thank you immensely for your support on behalf of the City Arts Commission, and then I would like to thank our staff for all of their incredible work on this project, our City Arts Commission Director, Tim Heatherton, Carol Jacobs, who attends our meetings, Francine, Catherine Milky, and the others. So again, thank you. We look forward to seeing you on opening day for the luncheon.
Fantastic.
And the luncheon is hosted by the Arts Foundation. They contribute to this private luncheon. Thank you. But opening day promises to be exciting.
Great.
Do you have any questions of me?
Nope.
About any of the art?
Nope.
Oh, good, thank you.
That was an easy one. Oh, is, sorry.
I'd like to also introduce our vice chair, who worked so hard on this project as well, Marie Little, who is here in the audience with me this evening. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, do we have any public comment on this item?
Mayor O'Neill, Jim Moserick, and I just wanted to clarify, because two of the council members commented on this, that 2,343 is the number of votes that were cast. People were on the online survey invited to cast up to three votes. The number of people who participated in the poll was a smaller number, 1,084. And you can tell from that that a number of the 1,084, 1,084, did not cast all three votes, and at the Arts Commission meeting, Mr. Stein suggested that perhaps a number of the 1,084 were not necessarily local people. They may have been friends with the artist from wherever they were, Ukraine or Spain or whatever, voting on behalf of that artist. So the number of local people who participated is not absolutely clear. I think all the operators of the poll know is the email address from which the votes were cast, which is not too telling. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? All right. Jim, you're not suggesting there was Ukrainian interference in this election? I'm sorry, I really couldn't, all right. Ms. Dixon.
I was just going to say the same thing. It was hacked. The website was hacked. I just want to conclude my earlier remarks by thanking the Arts Commission, and Arlene, and Marie, and all the members that are here, and you've been doing this for five years, and we have a beautiful park out there, and I appreciate what you do, and all the members of the Arts Commission do, and the Arts Foundation for their support, and city staff for their support. So this has been, it's a five-year anniversary, I guess, of your diligence in pulling this together, and just want to say thank you.
All right. Do we have a motion up here?
I'll move it.
All right. Seconded by Mr. Hurdman. Any discussion? All right, let's vote.
Motion carried unanimously, 7-0.
Thank you. Motion for reconsideration, Madam Clerk.
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the City Council, either this meeting or the previous meeting, may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
All right, do we have any motions? All right, seeing none, wash your hands, we stand in adjournment.